Good evening, and welcome to the November 22 meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. What I'd like to do now is to have the board members introduce themselves, starting with you, Sam.
Sam Siccarelli, Third Ward.
Rosemary Kerr, Second Ward.
Mike Adelman, Fourth Ward.
Angela Diedel, Fourth Ward.
Dan Jassica, Fourth Ward.
And Stuart Dixon, Ward Two.
And now we'd like to have the staff introduce herself.
Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve tonight, so the first one will be for September the 21st, 2010, the work session that we had on that date. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have a question for Kathy. This was a workshop as opposed to a public hearing, and it was also 60 days ago, and it was almost a three-hour workshop. So, when I go through the minutes for a public hearing meeting, you know, I read them all, but what I can really key in on are quotations. Commissioner Adelman asked this, and if I think something's in the minutes out of context, I'll make a correction. I don't think I ever do that about comments my fellow commissioners make. In this instance, this is about a non-public hearing, and it's about a three-hour workshop we had. There was so much discussed there. Do we need minutes for a workshop?
It was a public meeting. It was publicly noticed. You'd need minutes, but they are more in a summary form, because you're right, it wasn't a public hearing, it was really a discussion, so they can be more condensed, and the goal is simply to summarize rather than to follow the exact comments as you would in a public hearing.
Okay, well, in that case, I do have some comments.
Okay.
And the minutes are broken down into two parts. Most of the presentation, and then the second part's about the video of the August 16 city council meeting, which is briefly at the back. But, again, we discussed so much in that three hours, that the only thing that really jumped out in section one of this was on page four, the second paragraph from the top. It says, "In response to questions from the board, Mr. Filippini describes some scenarios." And then that next sentence, that kind of jumped out at me when I read these minutes. It says, "He noted, for instance, that the inability of a property owner to move to a bigger house is not a hardship." Truthfully, I don't remember that coming up. I don't know why that would've come up, because the hardships pertain to the property, not to a petitioner not being able to afford a bigger house. I can't afford a bigger house. A lot of us can't afford bigger houses, like, so, truthfully, I don't remember that. If any of you guys do, just ring in on it, but...
I think within the context, yes, that was brought up.
Okay.
In terms of, were there hardships to a particular resident that should affect the zoning decision?
Well, yeah, you're right about that. Okay, I just don't remember the specific one about being unable to move to a bigger house.
The way I recall it coming up was in the context of an expanding family is not considered a hardship.
Yeah.
And I guess that's...
That's elsewhere.
Yeah, that's what I recall, but this kind of related to that, I think.
Okay.
The proposed new location for the garage and the churchyard area. The approximate square footage of this entire area is about a half acre. And two thirds of that would be for the blue and about a third is for the green. If you did the entire metrics for the campus, about fifteen percent of the area is in this seven fifty parcel, ten percent here and five percent here. I'd like to share a few facts if I could about the history of this house. It was built in nineteen oh eight and we're very pleased to be in this neighborhood. We call it Little Coat. I think that was the nickname given to the church, to the, to the house at the time. It was built really by, let me get her name right, Octavius Mary Newell. Mary and her daughter Madeline lived in this house to begin with. It was built in nineteen oh nine. Nineteen twenty-eight Knight Cows purchased the property and added the garden structure in the back and the reflecting pool. In nineteen fifty-one, Alex Bell, Lexie Bell, purchased the home. His father had been headmaster of the Bell School. Since nineteen fifty-one, there have been five owners of the house. And we are delighted to be, to be in this part of town. Our proposal is to provide a very nice landscaped area. We have a landscape plans provided by Fiori. To create a private area in the back for the pastor. To upgrade the landscaping as you see it. To move the garage from an existing location closer to the house. To leave this area open for churchyard use. These photos were provided by someone who lived in the neighborhood and this photo album gave us some ideas about how the back of the house looked in the thirties and also how the front of the house looked back in the thirties. You can see a variety of different plantings, different layouts of the garden and a different front entrance when Sheridan Road was narrower back then. So we purchased the house back in July of two thousand and five. The purpose was to preserve and enhance our ministries. There's a precedent for residents for the headmaster of the Bell School. And at present, there are a number of institutions in Lake Forest to provide housing for their senior pastor and/or headmasters. So we felt we needed to provide housing in the future, long-term we're looking. And this made a lot of sense to us at the time. It was contiguous, appropriately sized, and we thought it would be a great addition to the church campus. When we first purchased the property, the owner wanted to stay there for a while, so we rented it. So for the first couple of years, it was rented. And then we have deliberated in our committee structure, and as Presbyterians, we have a lot of committees, who have had lots of ideas, lots of plans about what should be done or what shouldn't be done and why and how. We have gone through that entire discussion process and we're presenting the only approved plan that we have before our board of trustees. What we have done with this property is improved the exterior stucco. There was some repair work that needed to be done. We have repainted the exterior. We have done the windows. We've sealed them all and painted them. And we have completely painted the interior first floor. So we had a number of gatherings of people and neighbors to come in and see what we had done with the house. Looks very nice. We're very pleased with the progress so far. We have not done anything to the top two floors. We have plans to improve the yard, to improve the driveway, repair it, to replace the garage in a new location, do landscaping improvements in the back, and also establish a landscape buffer. We think it's appropriate. The neighbors have requested that. The city has requested that. We will provide only passive landscaping here and no activity on the church. And we think that would be a good border. And this reduces this area by about twenty percent. So this area is about five percent of the church campus. This reduces it one more percentage, so it's about four percent. So the area that everyone is having many comments about is that area, that four percent area of the property. We would like to remove the decaying garden house. We'd like to remove the garage. We'd like to replace it with appropriate landscaping as approved by the Historic Preservation Commission and the plan that we have to present and provide a much nicer look. In summary, we'd like to request an amendment to the special use permit. But we would like consideration on two of the conditions. If I may. Number ten, provides a lot of restrictions on the use of that four percent. So what we would like to suggest with the board of trustees is that, we will come back to it some later time, we've not proposed a parking plan. There's none in the packet. We've had lots of discussions, but we've not proposed a parking plan because we've not approved one at our church. So there's no approved plan to go forward with. We'd like to come back in the future with a plan that's been reviewed with the neighbors, reviewed with the city, and approved by our church trustees. That would be paragraph ten. And yes, we'd like more parking. We'd like about six to eight more parking places close to the building for our seniors. So in that four percent property we talked about, that's about what we would like to do. But we don't have a plan to propose to you this evening. Paragraph fifteen, the church would like to keep the neighbors abreast of our work, but we would prefer ninety days rather than six months. If you take the city's approval process and six months, that's a whole church here. And we thought that was unreasonable. We'd prefer ninety days instead of six months in that clause. But all the other conditions, we, we would like to say that we can concur with. So we'd like to reaffirm our commitment to be a good neighbor. We have always intended to be a good neighbor. I will say we're not a perfect neighbor, but our intent is to be a good neighbor. And not everyone feels that we have been a good neighbor. We've apologized profusely and I would apologize again. Second, we really appreciate the constructive dialogue that has occurred with city staff and with our neighbors and now here. We appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk with you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, next we'll have identification of issues by the staff. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I'm going to keep my comments short at this point. I do want to note that the staff recommendation is that the board not take action on this tonight. It's a lot of information. I know that many here tonight feel like this has been discussed for a long, long time, but I realize much of the information is new to you. I think that there are many people, as you saw, who have comments tonight and rather try and wordsmith the conditions and, and get them all right. I think this is an important enough issue that it really is appropriate to get your input and direction and then staff will continue to work with all parties to refine the language and to bring this back to you at your next meeting. We did try and reflect in the staff report that we, we know there are various positions on different issues. We tried to take a middle ground, so we do know that these conditions are, are not perfect, but it was a, a place to start. Just a, a very brief reminder about special use permits, and I did talk about this in the staff report. The city of Lake Forest, unlike other communities, has not chosen to adopt institutional zoning or governmental zoning, zoning that essentially gives a whole lot more freedom to governmental institutions, schools, churches. Other communities are a lot freer with that. Instead, Lake Forest has historically used the special use process as a tool to really facilitate a discussion between the institutions and the neighbors, recognizing that this community was built around the college, around the Presbyterian Church, and that those institutions as part of the residential neighborhoods really created a unique character. It's really looking carefully at how those uses can coexist, what buffers are appropriate and what limitations. And, and there's never a, it's not a science. There, there's not a right or wrong answer, but looking for your input tonight. I would also just in closing note that special use permits can be revoked, can be reviewed periodically if there are issues that come up. If, if in fact there are unanticipated consequences that come up, it is not impossible for the petitioner or for neighbors to come back to the city and request that the matter be reopened. But the special use permit ultimately is adopted by ordinance of the city council. And the, the stronger, the findings and the stronger the reasoning, it really goes a long way in providing certainty and clarity for all parties. With that, I would be happy to answer questions and look forward to your input and direction.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. Okay, are there any questions from the board to the petitioner or staff?
I have none. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of more informational questions.
Okay.
First for the staff. Kathy, the size of the lot at seven fifty North Sheridan, what is the size of the lot in that part of town, the minimum required size?
The property is zoned R three. The minimum lot size in the R three district is forty thousand square feet, essentially just under an acre. This is a part of, of the community where you have many lots that do not conform. You have large estates that have been subdivided over time. So the fact that this lot is below the minimum lot size is not unusual or out of the ordinary.
Because this one was approximately a half acre?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to put this within context.
Can I ask one question about that? When you say that, are you talking about just the blue part of seven fifty or the blue and green?
Everything in this area is zoned R three.
Okay.
And, but the acreage, half an acre, is just the seven fifty property. The, the existing church property is, it's in the staff report, I believe about three acres?
But to your answer, your question, the blue and green combined is about twenty thousand acre, twenty thousand square feet.
That was my understanding.
The diagram showed the, the proposal to sort of split the mans area from the back, the church backyard area. Both of those areas combined is twenty thousand square feet.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the property that today is addressed as seven fifty Sheridan Road.
Got it.
Is about a half an acre.
Okay.
And then, under current zoning, if a private property owner came into seven fifty North Sheridan and wanted to rebuild the garage, which is quite deteriorated, what would the setback requirements be for that garage structure?
You have them on your sheet and I don't have them in front of me. In the rear yard, it would be an accessory structure. And the setbacks should be noted on that sheet.
So twelve foot side yard, ten foot rear yard. Does that sound right, Kathy?
Actually, I have one here.
I think it's R three. That's R two. R three.
R three, the, the rear yard is ten feet in R three and the interior side yard would be fifteen.
Fifteen.
Actually, it would be ten and ten because it's in the rear twenty-five percent of the, the yard if it was rebuilt in the current location.
But where it's being suggested, it's still on the lot line there, isn't it?
Where it is being proposed, it would be ten, I'm sorry, it would be fifteen feet from the side yard in the location at which it is proposed.
The, my diagram of the twenty-four by twenty-four proposed garage appears to be quite close to the eastern boundary.
The request to incorporate the seven fifty property into the church property would eliminate that property line.
Right, right. And that's the difference I'm pointing out. So that rather than fifteen feet into the property, this is proposed for what, two or three feet from the boundary as it now exists?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a related question. So if they simply chose to develop this property without incorporating their special use permit, they would have to comply or else get a variance from that fifteen foot setback. Is that correct?
Correct. If a private property owner didn't own an adjacent property came in.
Well, even if First Presbyterian, even if they, if they did not incorporate it into their special use permit, would they still, they would still need a variance, would they not?
They would still need a variance. And if First Presbyterian Church chose to simply have the pastor live in the house and have no church-related activities on the site, if it was just strictly to be used as a private residence, they would not have to have made the request to incorporate this within their special use permit.
Right. And if they were doing that and they were relocating this garage, then we would simply be hearing a variance related to that garage location.
Correct.
Informational again. If a church is using a private property but not within its central activities, is this now on the tax roll?
I believe the property is currently on the tax roll. I don't, someone from the church could confirm that.
Then I think some of my other questions are probably more for Mr. Johnson. In reading the correspondence from the neighbors, several have asked for a master plan. It appears there's very little undeveloped property, perhaps your garage structure as opposed to the seven fifty garage. And there is a cottage that said Samaritan Center moved. What, what's your intent with those two properties? Because the rest is pretty much already fairly related to direct church activities or parking already.
Those are both open issues right now within our church. We are currently using the cottage for some storage. It's what we call on its seasonal sleeper mode for the, for the winter. We've taken water and other things out of it, electricity. And we store equipment in the first floor of the other building, the garage building.
And what's your intent on those current uses long-term?
We have not reached a consensus at our church about those. We have some discussions with the neighbors that are, will be ongoing in the future about that. But the cottage we have used in the past is a mans. It lacks privacy. We've used it as a counseling center and it lacks privacy. So it's not a church building where everyone in our church has the right answer. So we have some further discussions we need to wrestle with it.
Is that something that your congregation would be willing to consider within the context of the special use permit? Because it seems like some of the questions coming from the neighbors are, what are you going to do with the rest of the property?
You are the zoning board of appeals for the city we're in. So if, if that's the direction you'd like to take, we'd be open to future discussions. We are, we're not prepared to provide any plans for any parking or the future use of those two buildings in this petition.
Question on fencing. There's some debate about the height of the potential fence, but who would get the finished side of this fence? Is that a zoning issue, Kathy?
There currently is a fence along part of the west property line. That fence could remain in place. This, this requirement, the condition would simply require the church to construct a fence. If that, if the, if there is an existing adjacent fence, then the church could request having the finished side of the fence face the churchyard. Otherwise, the code does require normally that the fence face the neighboring property
And we'd certainly be willing to have a discussion with our neighbor about the appropriate facing of the fence.
Or a, a fence that might look good on both sides.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Rosemary. Mike?
Where does the pastor reside now?
Pastor resides in a private home in Lake Forest.
Oh, okay. So there, there's a building at the southwest quadrant of the main campus, just east of the parking lot?
That, yes, that building is our parish house.
Uh-huh.
It's used for church meetings. It's used for counseling. And we have a lot of adult study that occurs in that building.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't realize that. Next, at five seventy, those two buildings that you touched on with Rosemary. The staff report says they're historically significant and yet unless I missed it, I didn't, I didn't get any background on what the history of those two cottages is, are significant, why they're significant.
They're old. They, they are within the historic district. They are considered historic structures. There's currently no request on the table to modify those or move those or demolish those, but certainly if anything was to be done to those, that would be a request that would need to come before the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. And, and they're not occupied?
They're currently not occupied. They're used for storage.
Because you can't help but note they're vinyl clad and that like clashed with the concept of them being historically significant to me. And having recalled when you did that beautiful renovation of the main church, I was thinking, boy, it should sure be nice to tie these two historically significant buildings together with the main church with some cedar shake siding and maybe siding and stucco or whatever. And I know that's not on the table now, but I couldn't also help but note that your groundskeeper hasn't been paying the closest attention to those two buildings because there's a lot of debris around them up against the fence at the south lot line of the seven fifty property and so forth. So I, I see where this is an opportunity to really enhance the overall campus and create some green space for fellowship. But it sure be great to see something happen to those two historically significant buildings in that context. I'm done.
Okay. Angie?
Let's see. I do have a question for the petitioner. You said that you had some concerns with condition ten. Specifically, what, you know, what specifically would you like to see changed in that condition?
We currently don't have a parking proposal to bring before you that we have reviewed with the neighbors. But we would like to have the opportunity to have some flexibility as to where that parking might be in that space. The proposal in the exhibit shows that the parking would be on the fire lane. And we understand it has been thoroughly vetted with the city, but we would like to take the opportunity to thoroughly vet that with, with the fire department and Kathy and whoever else we need to talk to at the city. That would not be our first choice to have people pulling in and out of the fire lane. But that, that needs further clarification because we were told in August that we couldn't put parking along the fire lane. So we just wanted to have time to vet that and to have proper decision on that.
I guess, you know, reading this, it's somewhat general, so I guess I'm still a little bit confused as to what you're objecting to specifically in this as it's written.
That piece of property is about four percent of the total campus. And we'd like to put six to eight parking places in it for seniors who could be parking a little bit closer to our building. And we don't have the perfect solution for that. We'd like to have further time to think about that, work with the city and the neighbors and come back with that.
Okay. So you're suggesting that this, you know, be taken out at the moment and that it just be said that currently no parking is allowed in this area?
No parking until we come back with a, with a proposal.
Until there's a further discussion on that?
Correct.
Okay. I understand. Let's see. Oh, and a question for Kathy. Have the neighbors been provided this copy of the conditions that we got in our staff report?
The neighbors were provided the staff report. Prior to that, there were a couple versions of the conditions that, that were shared and the conditions continue to evolve.
Okay. Because I noticed they had attached some that looked like they were a previous version of that. They've received this updated version as well.
Yeah, just over the weekend. But there are also copies at the back.
Okay. Great. All right. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. Dan?
Kathy, help me understand, absent any renovations to the main structure, the mans structure, the seven fifty principal structure, what's the Historic Preservation Commission's role in reviewing any aspect of this proposal?
The Historic Preservation Commission will consider the request to demolish the garage and demolish the garden shed because they are both located within the historic district. And any demolition of a structure within the historic district requires a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. In addition, any new structures within the historic district require a certificate of appropriateness, so the replacement garage will also require their action.
And it's contemplated that they would take this after we've made whatever recommendation we, we would make?
They are scheduled to hear this tomorrow night. They are really focused on the design aspects. Any action by the Historic Preservation Commission would be conditional upon not only your action, but final action by the city council. But there's nothing that would preclude them from considering simply the design aspects. And actually that, knowing that, that that piece has cleared may be helpful to the zoning board as you consider final action on this.
I think I understand this, but the need for the SUP is that absent it, the, the back one-third of the seven fifty property could not be used for church purposes. It could only be used basically for the single, to support the single-family residence uses.
Correct. And, and even as I understand the proposed use of the mans, there would be some church-related activities. Not, not that those same activities couldn't occur in a private residence, so the line gets a little blurred here, but, but overall, the use of the seven fifty property is more than simply a private, single-family residence. So that's why it's, it's appropriate to consider this as part of a special use so that the church has some assurance of what uses can occur there and the neighbors also have some assurance about what uses can occur there, not just now, but also looking forward.
The, the latest report, the report, the staff report that I have, I got, I think at like one o'clock yesterday afternoon. So I'm assuming that that same report is the one that was made available to both the petitioner and to the neighbors today, basically?
Correct. The, the conditions.
I mean, I know that there were conditions, but the final product.
Yeah, the conditions, this is about the, the third revision of the conditions.
Right.
But yes, the final, the background and everything.
And, you know, I'm not faulting anyone, but it does concern me that we're here considering a, a set of conditions that was really just made available within the last twenty-four hours.
And just to clarify, no action is recommended tonight?
I understand that. And then the proposal is a seven foot, or one of the conditions you're suggesting is a seven-foot fence that would run the, the border basically between the church, the revised church SUP and the neighboring single-family residences. It would be one straight seven-foot fence?
Correct.
That's all I have.
I'm sorry, Cardy. I think looking at what we've seen so far tonight and based on the material and information that has come forward to us, not only here in the last forty-eight hours, but over the course of the last week, I know I certainly need a little more time to digest the data that has been presented in a, in a way that I'd be able to make a, a decision.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some additional, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One additional question for the petitioner. Could you expand a bit on the proposed activities for the churchyard area? What types of activities do you?
The outdoor season in Lake Forest is quite short. So for the period, May through September, October, from time to time after church, we may want to have some gatherings there. From time to time during the week, we may want to have a gathering. There is a, a garden for contemplation for someone just to go sit in, in a quiet space. We have no real space like that right now on our campus.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have a couple follow-up questions for Kathy then. In a space that's used for that, what kind of restrictions are there like on noise and lighting and, you know, tent structures and things like that that might be objectionable to the neighbors?
The proposed conditions try to address some of the, the issues that could come up. It sounds like the uses proposed are not all that different than what could occur in a residential backyard. But just to be sure, there, there is some language suggested about noise levels, lighting, clearly stating that the, any exterior noise levels, lighting, clearly stating that the, any exterior lighting would need to comply with the lighting guidelines that are, that apply to all residential properties. Certainly additional conditions could be put on, but there's always a balance between being reasonable with conditions, making sure that they can be enforced, and, you know, it's, it's that balance between putting some limitations, but, but not restricting all uses so that it becomes unusable.
Thank you.
Mike, you have a follow-up question?
I do, I do. In condition eleven, Kathy, you talk about, once a residential parcel addressed to seven fifty is incorporated into the church through the SUP, a separate residential lot may only be reestablished through re-subdivision of the property, and I'm scratching my head wondering, in what context could there ever be a re-subdivision here? Are you talking about seven fifty being consolidated into the entire holdings of the church so that then, under R-three zoning, they could subdivide out a one, a forty thousand square foot lot? Why are we talking about re-subdivision? Is it an conforming lot already?
I did hear concerns that if, for some reason, the, the manse was no longer desired by the church, that there may be interest in selling off what now is, is a littler piece, the manse and the manse yard, and I heard concerns about that, so I wanted to be clear that through this special use permit, this has designated a single zoning lot, joint ownership, joint use, so as defined by our zoning code, this will now be a single lot. Any future interest in, by the church to recreate a lot and sell off a parcel would need to go through a subdivision process. There would be no by right, this couldn't just default into the existing lot. So I'm not saying the subdivision would be approved, that condition is simply to clarify that if a, there is an intent or a desire to recreate a separate lot out of this property, that it would need to go through a re-subdivision process and either meet the R-three requirements, or there would need to be variances considered and granted by the plan commission and city council.
Yeah. Well, and then you bring up a good point. If, and who knows what the future holds, if the time ever comes that this were to be sold back into the private sector, we are potentially creating a new garage that's not meeting the side yard setbacks, but I can live with that because it's most offensive to the neighbor to the east, which would be the church itself, and doesn't affect other neighbors so much. But we would be creating a non-conforming garage in two thousand and ten.
Only if a re-subdivision was approved, and that re-subdivision...
Not even a re-subdivision, if they just sold off the existing lot, if like two years from now they decide, oops, we don't need the manse anymore, and they've sold off the existing...
They couldn't. The lot will, will no, will long, will no longer exist. It will be part of a single zoning lot with the overall church property.
So it is a consolidation?
It is.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
Mr.?
Yeah.
Mr. Schirmer, I just have one additional question, I think, for Mr. Johnson. One feature that's very nice about this is losing some of the impervious surface by pushing the garage forward. I noticed that there's a lot of asphalt, pretty much extending to the boundary line and the home. Are you planning to reduce some of that impervious surface as well?
Could you tell me again, between...
Between seven fifty North Sheridan and the eastern boundary, it's pretty much asphalt, impervious surface there.
Right.
Even where the, the home juts in on the west, still, it's impervious surface to the boundary of the home. When you are contemplating these changes to the garage, are you also contemplating reducing some of that impervious surface towards the front?
Not towards the front, but in the rear, behind the garage, yes. But not toward the front. The front would be as it is.
Not, not in front of the house, this is, sorry, but it's the eastern side of the residence, between where the home ends and the eastern boundary of the property.
Correct, we would, we would leave that as it is.
Okay.
For a turning radius for cars to come out on Sheridan.
I, I think you're talking about the driveway in front, aren't you? I'm talking about that space...
Behind the house, sort of.
Between the home and the eastern boundary to your property.
Correct, the front, the driveway access to Sheridan Road, we would...
Where the basement stairs go down, where the windows are for the window wells, all the way to the fence here, it's all asphalt.
May I pull up the, the plan?
Sure.
Sure.
Kathy, I need, I think I need the password again, thanks.
The password again.
For some of that area, we had planned on landscaping, I just wanted to be sure of the, the question that you had. So this area, we had planned to improve the plantings right by the house, reduce the impervious area there and there. What we wanted to do was leave some turning radius as cars pull in from Sheridan into the garage, that they would be able to pull out, given how busy Sheridan Road is. But we do have plans to improve the plantings right in this area and in this area.
But you would still keep the impervious surface to the eastern boundary there, in that area?
In this area, we would have plantings, in this area would have some plantings, but primarily leave the driveway here as it is. Here, we would remove the driveway and create a landscaped area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the petitioner's staff? Another question? Okay, if not, it's time now for public testimony, so are there, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Yes. Come forward and give your name, please.
I'm Ken Marsh, and my wife and I, Kathy, live two houses down from the store's home, five one-one East Walnut. We've been there for over twenty years, and we are members of the church. And I think we can speak for many of our neighbors that we're thrilled that they have bought the property, this historic home, we're glad that Christine may move into it, and that it certainly does need a garage, and I think we're all behind it. Now, that being said, it's, it's only a half-acre yard lot total, much smaller than anyone in the neighborhood. And since, you know, they don't have quite enough money that we can really look at, it's, it's tough to comment. Basically, they're going to make it a quarter-acre house, and, and, and we don't know, in the end, how many spaces we're going to have and all that, and so I think we need further discussion. And that being said, I think the church should look back and say, hey, what's the right thing to do here? Not what you can do, or roll it into it, or especially use permit, but if you think about it, it's been a home for a hundred years, and the right thing to do is a home, and a garage, and a yard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening.
State your name, please.
My name's Emmett White, and I'm here with my wife, Ann. We live at five fifty East Deer Path, which is just west of the Presbyterian Church. We've lived in Lake Forest for twenty-five years, and we've lived at five fifty East Deer Path for twenty-one years. A little background, our home was built in eighteen fifty-seven, and by a guy named Sylvester Lind. Mr. Lind was one of the founding fathers of the City of Lake Forest, Presbyterian Church, as well as Lake Forest College. And prior to Lake Forest College being Lake Forest College, it was named Lind University. We are very proud, the fact that our home has historical significance in the city, and we're pro, very, very proud of its heritage. Over the past twenty-one years, we have spent a great deal of time and money preserving our home to City of Lake Forest standards. It has also been our goal to preserve the unique residential nature of our neighborhood. We are here tonight to actually oppose what the Presbyterian Church request is. We think, as you look at the request, that it, it, it looks like a simple benign request, but it really is not. We feel that the petition does not specify all the uses in the special use permit. Now, although the church has owned seven fifty for five years, we as neighbors have been, have only been involved with any plans related to seven fifty for the last three months. Quite frankly, when it comes time to a process like this, we're novices. We really, we've heard a lot about R-three zoning, subdividing, special use permits is a brand-new concept to us. And quite frankly, the issues got so complex, we actually engaged some outside counsel in the last week, just to explain things to us, help explain things to us, and hopefully protect our neighborhood and our home values. You must know that our first preference for seven fifty would to keep it as a single-family residential home. We do not oppose it to be, we do not oppose seven fifty being a manse. We welcome the pastor to move in. We do not oppose the tear down of the buildings, or to build a new garage. But we just want seven fifty to remain residential in every way. Our fear is that the special use permit would turn seven, would turn a residential property into kind of an institutional property. We feel that the special use permit, over time, will encroach upon the single fa, the single-family nature of our neighborhood. We suspect that the, and because we don't understand a lot, we suspect that the special use permit is just the first of a series of land use requests for seven fifty. Feel that it'll allow institutional uses into a single-family neighborhood. For example, under the special use permit, we're really asking, is the church's next step to apply for additional parking, hardscape, and lighting in the backyard of seven fifty? And then we ask ourselves, has the city ever allowed this kind of request in the, in an R-three area? Now, we realize that this request for a special use permit does not address the church's long-term parking plan. But it has been noted, over the last twenty years, that the church is continually looking for, continually looking for ways in which to expand close-in parking. While we understand their problem, we feel that the practice of buying a home that is contiguous to the church property, and having an undefined ultimate plan of blacktopping the black, the backyard for parking, is not in the best interest of this historic district. There must be an understanding that at some point, the church has limited land in which to grow, and other solutions must be found so that the neighborhood and the church can continue to share this beautiful district in harmony. We also ask ourselves, well, what's the next step? What's the further step? Will it be to move the church's cottage, the one you pointed out, at seven fifty, into the backyard at seven fifty Sheridan Road? And again, so we ask the questions you asked before, wouldn't that kind of be subdividing seven fifty? We're trying to figure out these answers. And again, where else has there been a precedent set for somewhat subdividing a lot in the R-three area? Lastly, talked about master plan. Has the city seen a master plan from the church, related to the church campus, related to seven fifty Sheridan Road? We have, and it supports the fact that they, that the church would like to add impervious services, surfaces, I mean, lighting at seven fifty, and also considers the movement and demolition of the historic buildings at seven fifty, I'm sorry, at seven hundred Sheridan. Now, in reading the drafts of the special use permit, it appears to us to be open-ended, and it favors the church's master plan that we have seen. Generally, we have only received anecdotal information regarding the church's intentions for this property. We have not seen a definitive plan, so it makes us very, very skeptical. As neighbors, we have demonstrated, we believe a spirit of cooperation, and we're trying to compromise with the church, and the city, and staff, and will continue to do so, but we really need to see some very, very specific plans. And until that occurs, we urge you, you to deny this request tonight, and we intend to continue to take all the necessary steps in order to protect our home and neighborhood and related property values. For over a hundred and fifty years, our neighborhood has been residential. We need some permanency to the situation of seven fifty, and we're here tonight to ask you for your help in keeping it this way. Changing the nature of the neighborhood from residential to institutional, we do not believe is the right thing to do. Making use of seven fifty for a manse, and retaining the yard as green space, will help to maintain this as a single-family home. We feel that there is no need to rezone this property in order for it to be used by the church as a manse. Lastly, we have worked very hard to protect the historic significance and heritage of our neighborhood. We're just looking for your support in keeping it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Yes. I'm Ken Landis, and my wife, Leah, and I, live at seven sixty-six North Sheridan Road, which is the house that is due west of this piece of property. My wife would love to be here tonight, but she is at parent-teacher conferences for our four young children. I don't want to repeat what my neighbors said before, let me just say I concur in, in what they said in full. I had lots of notes here, and I am a lawyer by trade, so I could stand up here and, and love to talk, but I, I will definitely limit it to just a few comments that I've been thinking about. I'm not a land use lawyer, I have really little understanding of the issues here, and I agree that, and I think some of the board members even said this, it's just too early right now for anybody to be making critical decisions about this absolutely critical, beautiful, historic area in Lake Forest. This is going to take time and, and real deep thought in, in what's best for our community. You know, we just literally got some of the com, a full, detailed comment from the city today, and I've, I've just now been trying to, to read, to read through it. But again, two comments. First of all, you know, as a litigator, I can tell you that it's, it never made any sense, and certainly judge and boards and administrative boards, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do things piecemeal. The church obviously has a plan in mind, they want to get something done here, but instead of coming back piecemeal and bit by bit, and coming before you and leaving all this uncertainty out there, apparently for four to six parking places, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, we have a lot of angst and worry in the neighborhood because, for years, I mean, I've lived there for five years, and I've heard periodically, time and time again, that they want to turn that backyard into a parking lot. And I think there's tremendous concern in the neighborhood about that, and we'd like some assurances down the road, and there's absolutely no reason that I've heard at all here today by anybody, why this is such a pressing concern, that this needs to get done immediately. Winter is coming upon us, you're not going to be able to do construction...
Winter is coming upon us, you're not going to be able to do construction, this is going to be open in the summer for apparently fellowship, if that's what they really want. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to push this through at this point until we've had some time to really reflect and think about it. And the second thing is, we've all been in front of you very, several times, and you've done a wonderful job, I think, of limiting what the entire community can do to their property. You know, I just wanted to finish my roof line, and there were side yard setback issues, and it wasn't opposed by any of the neighbors, but because of the restrictions it's placed on zoning rules in the City of Lake Forest, I was restricted from that. And I think, you know, you can't allow an institution to change things that you wouldn't let individuals change, or any other business, and that's really what's being asked to be done here. You're asking, at its most fundamental core, to take a beautiful private residence in the most historic area of Lake Forest and turn it into an area for public use. At its very core, it's just, it's improper on every level. So again, I could talk more, but I do think we need time to try to reflect. Of course, we would like, if possible, to work this out for everybody's best interest. But, you know, I would say the key here is just make sure we have time to all get this right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to comment?
Good evening. My name is Steve Huff, and I represent my wife Betsy and me. We have lived at seven six five North Sheridan Road for the past seven years, and I was born and raised in Lake Forest and have lived in Lake Forest for over thirty years. I believe our house was built by Walcott in nineteen twenty-four and is considered a historically significant home, too, in the neighborhood. My wife and I would definitely go on record and say that we support maintaining seven fifty North Sheridan as a residence in its current state, and we're thrilled to have another good residence in the neighborhood. We would ask the Church to involve the contiguous neighbors in the master planning process, and I think that's probably been the most difficult situation in this process, is making sure that this has been an open dialogue with the neighbors. And I would say that the Deer Path Walnut and Sheridan neighbors are a very reasonable group and willing to engage in discussion. However, we'd ask that discussions occur in a more transparent fashion. I know that we've been having some discussions over the past three months, but many times that has left us scrambling with these discussions via email, as many of us are strewn across the country on travel and business, and most recently, the special use permit that was published in the last twenty-four hours. I would applaud Kathy's effort. She's been incredibly helpful in making an attempt to define a mutually acceptable special use permit. However, at this time, we're just not there. You've heard a number of comments this evening, and we would ask you to consider that the neighbors remain committed to working openly with the Church. However, more complete master planning with parking must be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Judy Krieger. We live on Sheridan Road in a house built in eighteen sixty by Devilla Holt, one of the founders of the college and the Church and Lake Forest. Having a house built in eighteen sixty with no central heat was very interesting. We also found ourselves with a non-buildable lot next door, and we now have a neighbor. They recently doubled the size of their parking in the back, so we now have probably three to four parking spaces right next to us. And we are not complaining. That's, that's just fine. But, I mean, things do change, and, and I think it's a little bit unreasonable to say that a Church or a residence cannot make changes for all time. The city's very good about carefully examining every change to every proposal that comes here, and we're very glad that you do. Lake Forest is a very special place, and as a resident in a very historic house here, I feel we are stewards of what these properties are. The Church has been a wonderful neighbor. They've maintained their property extremely well. I think it would be, and I think everybody agrees, it would be the way to go to take down that horrible garage and that garden structure, which is just definitely not in keeping with Lake Forest. I think a, you know, a landscaped area behind the Church, behind the manse in that center area abutting the other houses would be a wonderful advantage. Again, I don't know what the plans are for long-term parking at the Church. I believe it would only be four to six spaces. That almost doesn't seem unreasonable in light of what's been allowed in other places. So on that, thank you for your consideration.
Can you tell us your address?
My neighbors are fine, and I don't want to get anybody in any trouble.
No, we're just asking for your address.
Your address.
Five seventy Sheridan. And, and I will say, our house is less than six feet from the lot line because of the way it was subdivided, and the neighboring house is very close to their lot line. But again, there's a lot of property around the other areas. Our neighbors were very good in granting us a variance, otherwise we wouldn't have a garage. I think it's very similar to the manse area. You need that space around the side to get around and get into the garage and get access in and out.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Yes.
My name is David McKenzie. I was baptized in the Presbyterian Church in nineteen thirty-one, so I have seen a lot of things happen. When the Church moved over to Sheridan Road, the town was a very, very small community. Then, as the town grew, we needed space in the Bell School, which the house housed Mr. Allen Bell, then his son Lex Bell, for all those years, and about nineteen sixty or so, and it was sold. So we, I think the Church's intention, when they bought the house, was not parking, but unfortunately, the house was bought in two thousand, oh, ten thousand and five, and due to this recession, we have a mortgage on it and loan. From where I'm coming from, we need to get the house paid off somehow, and we're not going to open a parking lot and sell parking spaces, but this is very important, that it's not to me a parking issue, it's a house issue, and get the Church out of a hole that they didn't wish to have to be in. And so parking, and Stephen, I won't park in your place anymore. You've been very kind to let me do that, but I guess this is rubbing you the wrong way.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One more thing. My wife was on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and the fence between Mr. Landis and seven fifty was on his property. He tried very hard to get the Church to pay for half of the fence that was on his property, and the Church wouldn't go along. So I'm afraid he may have gotten a little contentious about that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Missy Romanoff, and I live in Lake Bluff now, but I did live at seven six six North Sheridan from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-eight, and it was a glorious, wonderful house to live in, and I had wonderful, wonderful neighbors. Five eleven, where the Marshes now live, Jean and Allo are my neighbors and very, very dear friends. They had four wonderful children. And the other side, they were Presbyterian Church members in R, and the other side were the Kiders, Norm and Sally. Norm is no longer with us, but I'm still in constant touch with Sally, who lives in La Hoya and comes back to see one of her daughters annually, so we see each other then and have a wonderful time reminiscing. So many happy memories. It was the one most wonderful neighborhood, the Reed's, he was president of the Lake Forest Bank that was bought out by the Northern Trust, where the Huff's now live. They were just absolutely marvelous neighbors. The Kiders were great neighbors, too, but they had two sons that were very, very active. One was a great football player in high school, and then it went on to be varsity at Northwestern. And I tell you, with that third floor rocked and rolled, I would sit on my porch, which is then a screen porch, and it would vibrate. But I knew it was a happy time, and it didn't go all night, so I was, you know, delighted to put up with that. Had I known, when we moved here from London, and the last two years of the IRS bombings, we're not very happy. You would be at home, live right next to Harrods, and they'd blow out a corner. Or you'd be in a restaurant, and a week later, they'd blow that up. I mean, it was, I was very apprehensive and happy to get back to the good old USA. So living one house away from the Presbyterian Church, halfway or, you know, block and a half away from the Holy Spirit, I thought I'd died and gone to heaven. This was as safety as it could be. And had I known that the head pastor of the Presbyterian Church was my next-door neighbor, I think we'd have paid more. We had to pay full price because I didn't know any better at the time, but that would have been a icing on the cake. So I don't think it would decrease the value of the neighbor's property. I think it would increase and enhance the neighbor's property. And I would just say, you know, forget the parking, that's a dream, but if it doesn't work, the neighbors are unhappy about it, all we want to do is allow Christine Chakoyan and her husband John Tadziski, who I don't think will have rock and roll parties, the joy of living close by to the Church and Church being allowed to use it occasionally on the back portion from time to time for purely Church-related social events, coffee hours, no lighting. We're not planning to do anything like that merely to have the joy of having our pastor close by. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Lynette Hinch, and I'm a member of the Church. I'm also a member of the seven fifty ad hoc committee, and as that committee, we have recorded a session, which is our governing body of the Church, each month. Committee has met with the four neighbors who are concerned about the Church converting the seven fifty house to a manse for our head of staff. We met with the neighbors first in July. We, the First Presbyterian Church, had planned to come to you in July to ask for what we did think was a simple request, and actually one that we thought would be pleasing to our neighbors. We've done everything these past five months to reassure our four neighbors that we are not paving the back half of the property, we're not turning the yard into a parking lot. And in the course of some of these meetings with our neighbors, we did learn that there was a breach of trust some twenty years ago. And as you've heard, this breach of trust continues, although I can assure you that our Church is trying diligently to gain the four neighbors' trust and to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
This is also live?
Believe so.
Thank you. I've got, I've got a couple of written remarks, but I know they're going to be plenty short. So I'm Prue Biedler, and I live at twenty South Stonegate in Lake Forest, and I am a member of the First Presbyterian Church, and I'm on the seven fifty ad hoc committee and I guess a few others as well, but that would be the hat I'm wearing tonight. Church member and seven fifty ad hoc member and Lake Forest community member. Many of you know that First Presbyterian recently celebrated its sesquicentennial, and it was up there on the board, or one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of opening its doors. Throughout the time we celebrated this momentous day, our pastor Christine Chakoyan led us in thinking about our very deep roots and about the people who were vitally important in shaping the foundations of this Church. We got to know a number of these people better, as Chris too has done in writing a book of our Church's history, and it became clear that at every critical point in the life of our Church, its leaders thoughtfully and often courageously faced present circumstances, while at the same time, planning ways to strengthen the Church into the future. I doubt they were thinking sesquicentennial, rather they were thinking that generations of families would be coming together in communal worship, just as we continue to do today. As I walked into church yesterday, I tried to imagine what it must have been like on any given Sunday a hundred and fifty years ago. The Church standing strongly by itself, a beacon to those who thought of taking the grand adventure of coming to this rural place and settling amidst the lake and the trees. There would have been a very limited neighborhood, and the Church itself looked different. As with any structure of its age, changes have been made to the Church and surrounding property over time. But what is essential at First Presbyterian Church? That it welcomes worshippers to come, pause in their lives, reflect on their bounty, and seek God's guidance for ways to give some of this bounty back to the broader community in which we live. This is the same. I married into this Church, actually. My husband Frank's family had been coming for two generations before he was born, and now there have been three additional generations celebrating at the Church. I began attending church with my beloved mother-in-law Eleanor Chapman Biedler, who taught me to love not just the beauty of the Church, but also helped me to learn the restorative power of the faith I found within its space and community. This is what churches do. First Presbyterian had the same effect on worshippers a hundred and fifty years ago that it does on worshippers today. I hope that tonight, as we talk of building projects, master plans, and yes, even parking, we remember the core reason that churches exist, not just First Presbyterian, but all churches. They help us to think and act beyond ourselves and take a longer view of the very purpose of our lives. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? No other comments? Okay. The next agenda item is any final questions from the board of the petitioner or the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question perhaps for Kathy. This is now a single-family residence. If the garage is moved forward, it would seem there is a green space once the garage that is now falling apart and the playhouse are removed. Would there be any restriction on use of that space for gatherings of First Pres or whatever invited guests that house would want to entertain? Why does this have to be? I'm trying to understand why it has to be sectioned off.
As a special use, you mean?
Well, we've got two issues, really. I mean, it's the special use, but also sectioning off so that the home for use by the pastor is a smaller area, and then this other area is designated as a green space. You could, I think, also keep it as a residence, and people could use that backyard as they wish, just as they would now.
Yes, this property could be kept as a private residence, either in private ownership, or it could simply be kept as a private residence and the pastor would live there. But what is proposed by the Church is really more of an incorporation of this property into the Church. As proposed, there would be uses that really are directly related to the Church, so it is more than simply the pastor living in this house. That's certainly one option, is that the property just stays as it is. But with the proposed uses and the proposed plan that does segment the property, provides a smaller private area with the manse, and then a general, the rear third of the yard would be a general churchyard essentially. That is what is currently proposed.
You could still have a special use permit for the entire seven fifty parcel. They could seek a variance to, well, I don't think it could be a variance, they request demolition of the garage and the playhouse. They can move the garage forward within current zoning and put it on the property within current zoning requirements. So my question is that third in the back, why is that being separated and designated at this point?
That's the proposal from the Church, is to create a smaller yard Is to create a smaller yard with the manse and have the rear third be a churchyard. That's the proposal that's been submitted.
Okay. I understand that's the proposal. My question is, I guess, my comment is, I think there are other ways to achieve the same goal and still keep it within the current structure, not require so many changes. But, but one thing I do want to say, I strongly want to acknowledge Presbyterian Church in Lake Forest and its place in the history of Lake Forest. And as several of the neighbors pointed out, their homes can originally be traced back to being built by members of the original congregation. So, I would hope that the church and the neighbors could work together, as they did originally, to come up with some compromises that would work.
Okay. Reverend, would you like to comment on that question?
Thank you. Yes, the question of why do we need to divide that section out and separate it? I understand completely, because technically, yes, if a pastor wanted to have coffee hour in her backyard, nothing would prevent her from having coffee hour in her backyard. It's hard for me to put words to this, but the ambiguity of relationship of a pastor to his or her congregation is a difficult delineation to make. One of the fears that people have who reside in manses or parsonages is that the congregation will come knocking on the door, the congregation will come into the backyard, the congregation will help themselves. For, for the sake of the pastor who's living there, the delineation of this is public space and this is private space is inordinately important. It's crucial for us that we are able to say, with no doubt, in any parishioner's mind whatsoever, this is the pastor's private space. So also, the movement of the garage up towards the house itself is even almost a barrier for the pastor to be looking out of the house towards the church. Now we have a bit of a guardian there, so that, that the public life of the pastor is separated out from the private life of the pastor's family.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Mike?
This is for Kathy. If this weren't the church, but if it were a private petitioner coming in who had just acquired 750, and they wanted to tear down the garage in the back and tear down the garden house and build a new garage closer to the house, and let's say hypothetically, it met the side yard setback requirement, is that something that would be fairly easy to facilitate?
Yes, in that scenario, if it met the zoning requirements, this petition would simply go before the Historic Preservation Commission for consideration of the demolition and replacement structure.
Okay. So, I'm just taking this one step at a time. So, there's nothing that compels a detached garage to be located in the rear of a residential lot? We know that attached garages have to be attached to the house, but it can, other than the side yard setback variance, it's okay to locate a detached garage up front like they're proposing here?
Yes, the zoning code requires that the garage be located at least ten feet from the principal structure.
Okay. So, and if the, and I understand the explanation, it was excellent, about delineating private space for the pastor from fellowship space in the backyard. But removing the garage and the garden house and pulling up the asphalt in the back and creating new green space, taking it one step further, that still preserves a residential character of this property, correct? I mean, we're not really doing anything different. So, it could, if the garage were the only issue and we were here to consider a variance for the side yard setback on a new garage, we'd welcome the proposed landscaping and the cleanup of the property, and it would be a welcome addition to the neighborhood, I suspect. I see the special use permit being a formality that the church feels it needs to go through because they aren't going to be private parties in the backyard, it's going to be for the whole congregation. So realistically, the rear third is becoming a church use, and it is appropriate to put it under a special use permit. And another consideration is that by doing that, it might make it easier to make a case to the tax assessor's office too, that because now it's a church use as opposed to a private party's use, you're entitled to waiver of any real estate taxes, which I don't have a problem with either for a church use. So, if you take it step by step to this point, it's not too hard to see your way through this. What becomes problematical is as soon as you start talking about maybe moving those historic cottages or creating new parking space, now you're kind of creating a transitional lot or a transitional use of 750, which, you know, we're all going to have our own personal opinions about whether we want to permit that or not. But up to that point of just moving the garage forward, allowing them to build it without complying with the side yard setback and creating the green space in the back, it's like any other conventional variance request. You know? That's kind of how I see it.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Angie?
One question I have, Kathy, is there's been some discussion about whether the church and the neighbors have been meeting and talking. Has the city been involved in any of those meetings where representatives from both camps have sort of been talking with staff? Or has that, has that occurred at all?
There's certainly been a willingness, I think, on the part of all parties to talk, but the discussions so far have really been between the neighbors and the church, staff in the church and staff in the neighbors.
And personally, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is that something you want to be involved in? Do you think there's a role for the staff to play, or?
We're perfectly willing to play whatever role is appropriate.
Is part of the basis for your recommendation that no action be taken today so that that type of conversation and dialogue can take place? Or is that not something you personally are going to be pushing for?
I think there's been a good dialogue in, say, the last thirty, forty-five days. And I think there's, there has been earlier discussion, but I think there's been a lot of progress made. I think tonight, we've heard more specifically that maybe the number of parking spaces desired is anywhere, I think I heard four, six, eight, ten. I think it may be worthwhile to try and go a step further and understand whether we can look forward a little bit more and see if there's a configuration of those six to eight spaces that maybe works for both sides, or, you know, try and nail down a few more pieces. It sounds like, although I do hear clearly that the neighbors would prefer to have this remain a private property, a private residence. The recent history of this property, I know since I've been on staff here over the past thirteen, fourteen years, we've talked and met with a number of people who have looked at this house. So, I'm, I'm not sure that, that given the condition of the outbuildings and, and to be frank, the relationship of this house, it really is immediately adjacent with no buffering to the church driveway. And I think that's what the neighbors are most concerned about, that we don't allow a domino effect. If this property is in fact going to be incorporated into the church property, it should be appropriately buffered and appropriately restricted so that it does form a solid boundary so that other properties aren't compromised. So, that was a long way to answer your question, but I think if all parties are willing, the staff is certainly willing to work very hard on this and see if we can come to a little bit more refinement.
If I can hop in there too, I mean, the staff report makes it clear, you're looking for some direction from this board
Right, right.
to give some boundaries to any future discussion between the neighbors and the church and yourself.
And I think the general feedback, is the board interested in seeing this come back? Do you think, hearing what you've heard now, is there a workable solution? If not, and if this isn't going to go forward, I think save everybody the trouble and say, no, this isn't something we'll support. So, whatever direction you can provide.
Okay. Stu?
No, no further comment.
Okay. Is there any rebuttal from the petitioner on anything that's been said or discussed so far tonight?
If I may, just clarify a few points. It's been suggested that the church has a master plan. I would like to see it. We do not have a master plan. We have sketches, ideas, plans, but we don't have a master plan that's been approved by our Board of Trustees. It has not been recommended by our ad hoc 750 committee, which consists of four committees of the session, and it has not been discussed and approved and hasn't been brought forward. So, what we are talking about is the only plan that exists, and that's the one before you as a board. We have been in the residence district for 150 years as a church. That's been well documented, and we have been an institution that has coexisted in that residence district, being very sympathetic to the historic nature of the neighborhood and being a good neighbor in every way that we know. We know that we haven't been perfect neighbors, but we have made every intention to try to be good neighbors. We are willing to explore the parking, but this is not an immediate issue for the church. This could be years from now. We didn't bring it to the board because we don't have a plan, and we don't have consensus on where we think it should be. We didn't want restrictions in perpetuity, which is why we wanted to have further time to talk about it with the staff and the neighbors. And we're talking about a limited number of spaces for our seniors close to the building. We have been improving this property because we know it's important to the neighborhood and ourselves, and we want to continue to improve the property. We have made significant progress since we've taken ownership and intend to move ahead. We would like the board's consideration based on discussions tonight.
Thank you. Kathy, any staff comments relative to public comment or the petitioner's comments? You already covered a lot of that stuff.
I can't think of anything else. Thank you.
Okay. So now it's time for us to discuss this subject. I have been relatively quiet tonight. But, so I'll make a few comments right at this point. One thing I think is crucial is when we opened the meeting, in my opening statement, one of the things I said is that our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. And as a community as a whole, that includes the neighbors, obviously. It seems to me that there still needs to be some more work on the part of the church in terms of determining what they really want to do with this property. And I don't know whether that's a master plan or exactly what. But there is, there are a lot of questions on the part of the neighbors. There's clearly a lack of trust that exists, and I don't know, maybe that went back twenty years and still hasn't healed. And I think to push this thing one way or the other at this point would be a disservice to the community and would create a lack of trust that would probably last forever. So, I think clearly there needs to be more discussion, more work between the church and the neighbors relative to the green area on the map and what's going to happen with that and so forth. I don't think there's enough information here at this time for the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a ruling relative to this particular petition. There are just too many questions that still exist, and until there's a, there's a good dialogue, hopefully resolving the issues that currently exist between the neighbors and the church, I think we need to try to see if we can make that happen before we move further. The staff is not recommending that we make a decision on this tonight, and I think that's a very appropriate recommendation. Other comments?
I agree.
I would just echo that, especially given the fact that the staff report is so fresh. I just don't think it's fair to anybody for us to move forward on it today.
Other comments? Rosemary?
I guess the question I have is what further guidance should we be giving staff?
Well, that's what we need to talk about.
I think that's the next part of the conversation. We need to provide some direction going forward.
Okay, who would like to start that discussion as to what direction we give the staff in trying to lead us to a conclusion on this?
Well, I think Mike did a very nice job of sort of saying that from, at least from my standpoint, I have no problem with the concept of tearing down those two dilapidated buildings, moving the garage closer to the manse. So, to me, you know, that's not the problematic area. The problem is, of course, limited to that green space behind it and...
Maybe we should kind of walk through the conditions as they are and see. I mean, that might take a little while, but...
You know, if in time we approve a special use permit per the application that's submitted, they're not asking for parking. So, whether you're silent on, by not approving the parking or whether you proactively put a prohibition or restriction against parking, I believe, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, the backyard can't be used for parking and new impervious surface short of coming back to with another petition in the future, which could be in the near term, could be after we're all the way gone, so...
But the corollary to that is if we said we granted them a SUP, but it didn't allow any parking or any impervious surface on that back area, that's not to say that a future board couldn't consider an amendment to that SUP and grant that, so... You know, the flip side is, so even if we were to say absolutely nothing but green grass back there, that's not from now until the end of time.
And we also need to determine if that's the real issue as far as the neighbors are concerned. If we put that into the special use permit, would that satisfy the neighbors? Or is that only one of many issues that need to be resolved?
Mr. Chairman, should we ask the church for some more clarity on what they intend to do with
Yes, I think we should.
the cottage and the garage? I wouldn't set that as a requirement. I'm simply asking for more input if you're able to give it prior to the time the zoning board would make their decision.
I think they've been pretty clear that it's just not part of the petition before us. I mean, they're asking us to consider tearing down the structures, moving the garage up and creating green space in the backyard. That's the extent of the petition. If they have an ulterior motive in the future, some of the board will have to deal with it.
I'm not suggesting any ulterior motives. I'm suggesting should the areas of their property that are not included be given some thought now as they seek this special use permit?
If I'm not mistaken, this special use permit only applies to 750.
Right.
Well, it's actually an amendment to the existing special use permit, which is the entire parcel, the entire property, the entire church holdings.
So, we can comment on it.
Yeah. I'm sorry to that.
I don't mind hopping in here. I'll tell you what my thoughts are. I think the church is potentially a great neighbor. There's a lot more certainty in the, in the well-being of the real estate owned by the church than there is a private individual, because we've all seen the ups and downs of our friends and constituents in town, and nobody's got control over that. The church is pretty rock solid. The petition before us, if it were a private petitioner, I don't think I'd be inclined to approve the garage without the required side yard setback, because there's no hardship here. The garage could be moved a little further south and then over to the west so that you meet the side yard setback requirement. But because of the intended utilization here as a manse and because it will be consolidated into the church property, I don't have a problem permitting the garage as proposed, even though it doesn't meet the side yard setback requirement, and there's no hardship for it. And we're supposed to grant the variances based on a hardship. I'd be happy to see the existing garage go and the garden and green space created. I'm not going to sit here and say, and one of the stipulation is a restriction of future parking, but I think Ken Marsh summed it up pretty simply. It should, I personally, and the rest of you can speak for yourselves, I'd like it to remain residential in character, and I don't... And I don't think that's violated at all by the proposal before us. I would personally hate to see parking ever constructed on it, but we're not being asked to consider that. So that would be my direction, is I could personally, as one of seven on this board, approve the petition as submitted, tearing down the stuff in the back, moving the garage forward, having a fence or some sort of landscape buffer between the private residence of the pastor and the public fellowship area in the backyard. And I would think that's a welcome addition to the neighbors. And I would think, based on what I've heard from the neighbors, that would keep them happy. They'd be happy with that. And the rest of you can chime in on your own.
Well, I think the concern is that once you make the back area part of the special use permit, then it opens up for possible future amendments, the utilization of it for purposes that would be offensive to the neighbors.
They have to come ask.
Yeah.
And there's going to be history here.
And I think that's where the dialogue between the neighbors and the church needs to occur. We've heard dialogue. We need to really understand the dialogue, and I think that's what needs to occur.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't know if we need a motion for this, do we? Just a direction? Kathy, do we need any kind of a motion, or have you got enough information from us?
If you wish to continue it, yes, you should make a motion to continue it.
Yeah, we'll have to move to continue it, right?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Is there a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
A second.
Discussion?
I guess the only question is whether you feel you have enough direction from us or not. If not, then we need to provide clearer direction. I think the, I think the conditions that you drafted and prepared and sent out to us are probably 90% fair.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. The motion is passed, and we will continue this presumably in the January meeting, because we don't have a meeting in December. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And hopefully, this will give the church and the neighbors some additional time to have discussions and hopefully come to a meeting of the minds that everybody can feel comfortable with. Thank you very much. Okay, the next, next item on the agenda is consideration of the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting schedule for 2011. Is there any discussion with respect to the meeting schedule?
I know I had it.
A motion to approve the schedule?
Anybody? Is there a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the meeting schedule is approved. This is an opportunity for anybody, any, any member of the public to address the zoning board on any other issue that you might have? Anybody else?
No.
I guess not, okay.
Motion adjourned. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion signify by saying aye. Aye, okay.
Are we adjourned, chair?
Where's your?
There we go.